Going to call the January ninth, two thousand twenty-four Clay County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I will make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of the request for approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign? Passes. Do want to thank the Citterdall Lions for the generous donation they made to the Clay County Sheriff's Office K-9 program. It is appreciated and timely. And that is our consent agenda. Have any citizens be heard?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Anyone here present? Okay. Approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Two approved. Round second.
Motion and a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? And we have the minutes from December twenty-sixth. Need approval of those.
Move approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Next on the agenda, we have the reappointment of Kurt Cannon to another four-year term as Clay County Veteran Service Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With all the excitement of the oath of office last week, I neglected to do one thing, and that was to bring the reappointment to you. And so, we are here this morning for your consideration of reappointment of Kurt. I think Kurt continues to be a strong advocate for the veterans of Clay County, and really not only the veterans of the Clay County, but our region and anybody that gives him a call. He really has a servant heart to working with veterans. He, if there's an event in the Fargo-Moorhead area, you're going to see him there, whether it's an evening, a weekend, a holiday. And also, this past year, he's been very strong. He's a strong advocate at the legislature. He provided testimony this past year in regards to DMV benefits for veterans, which ultimately ended up passing. And so, with that, I would bring forward Mr. Cannon for reappointment.
Just observation on that, Mr. Cannon not only provides services to our Clay County veterans, but he is a mentor and a leader in other counties where they've had problems getting veteran service officers or training them up to the standards that he meets. And he's been a great asset, not just to our community, but the communities around us. We're grateful for that, Kurt. Any other comments?
Yeah, I just want to point out, I had an opportunity to go to a service for a unclaimed veteran out at the National Cemetery, and who was one of the first persons I saw there was our veteran service officer. So, I agree with you. And then, on Sunday morning, I went to a breakfast that was held by the FM Legion Riders, who support a lot of veterans' issues, and who walks in, Mr. Cannon. So, you're right when he's there for an awful lot of things, and I just want to thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you for participating. I was surprised to, out there, but the unclaimed is pretty important around here when they have no family. So, there's a good fifty, sixty of us that try to make it, but there's so many events in Fargo-Moorhead area, there's not humanly possible to get to them all.
Right.
Keep a social life. But, you know, if it fits in a meal, you know, I'm usually there. No doubt.
Mr. Chair, I would move the reappointment of Kurt Cannon to the another four-year term.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Have a motion and a second to reappoint Kurt for four years. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? You stuck with us for another four years, Kurt.
Thanks for your support. Appreciate you, guys.
We also have another agenda item here for Kurt. It's been added to the agenda. Request for approval, out-of-state travel for national training for veteran service officers. If we're going to retain you, I guess we got to train you.
I think that's a military thing. Retain, retrain. And national training CEUs this year, Denver, May eleventh through the eighteenth. Just to refresh, three years ago, they took out of my state grant, so budgeted in our county as Jennifer's expenses, and I get out of the state grant. So, it was budgeted three years ago for her to attend training. Out of county, I'm out of the state grant. So, that's just reassure where that money is coming from. That is in my budget as of three years ago. So, you know.
Move to approve the travel.
Round second.
All right. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign?
Boom, go to work.
Vote your flight.
Yeah. Well, that's the other thing, should I drive? Because I hate flying. All right, thanks.
We got Sheriff and Chief Deputy here. Next item on the agenda is the request approval to hire a community service officer for the sheriff's office. Sheriff?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Thanks for having me this morning. I would just like to take about thirty seconds to recognize today as being National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and recognize all the law enforcement officers in Clay County that work very hard to keep our community safe, and also recognize all our deputies, our office staff, and our correctional officers here in Clay County that do a great job for us, and they definitely represent Clay County very well, and they represent the office of sheriff very well. So, thank you to all of them for what they do. With that, we are here today for a request approval to hire a community service officer for the sheriff's office. If you recall, during our budget cycle this year, this was presented in the budget for this position. At that time, we did go over some duties and responsibilities that the community service officer would have, and they were also presented to you with an attachment in the packet. Some of those duties are going to be to handle calls relating to animals, whether it's a wild animal or domestic animal, assist our emergency manager in several different things. It's going to be, of course, picking up and delivering paperwork, overseeing our fleet, just several different things that we currently do right now as either lieutenants or chief deputy and myself, to be able to take that off of our plate and be able to have that individual do it. Another duty would be to assist our patrol division, whether it's during storms and things like that. You get a vehicle off the road that's not a crash, that individual would be able to sit with that vehicle, while the deputies are freed up to take calls for service, such as vehicle crashes, injury crashes, things like that. So, I do see several different benefits of having this person within our office, and I would hope that it is supported by the commission today.
Thanks, Sheriff. Just an observation on this, CSOs have been valuable in freeing up officer time for years in different departments I've worked in. Moving these non-enforcement duties to somebody else, they not only cover it, but they cover it better. Once they become proficient with it, they have more experience in dealing with things, and it's going to free up deputies. So, I think this is an excellent opportunity to get more bang for the buck from the sworn personnel we've got. Any comments?
Thank you, Sheriff. The, one of the, another duty that I thought of, how about your, the trips to, for autopsies and stuff like that? Would this person be able to do that type of thing? Or is that a, is that more of a deal that's requires?
Right now, that's contracted out through Valley Mortuary Services.
It is, okay.
Yeah. We have a contract for somebody to do that, and it's been working very well for us, because what ends up happening is that individual will come up and pick up the decedent and then transport them to their facility for overnight, and then they'll transport in the morning or when the roads are good. Sometimes we were taking trips probably when we shouldn't have back in the day, because the roads are terrible.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions?
To me, it totally makes sense. It's in the budget, so I'll make a motion when we approve the hire, request to hire.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Justin Storm, our county engineer, you've got a couple of contracts here to bring up.
Yes, so the first item I have is requesting approval of the final contract voucher for SAP fourteen six eighteen zero one six. So, this was a millon overlaying cold-in-place recycling project on CASA eighteen. So, this did have an LRIP grant on it. The project turned out really well. RJ Zavrell and Sons was a contractor, and the final amount to be approved is two million six hundred and eight thousand seventy-three dollars and ninety-five cents.
Any questions for Justin?
Justin, just, I'm curious, can you give a little short, what is cold-in-place recycling?
So, cold-in-place recycling is probably something we're going to be doing a lot of in this county, just based on the type of roads we have and the lack of gravel base underneath them. So, it takes about four inches of the existing road, grinds it up, you inject a cold emulsion, which is asphalt, into it, relays it out cold, and over a period of about fourteen days, that really sets up and provides a really hard base, and then you pave on top of that.
So, I'm just saying, has this been a common project, or?
This was the first time we have done it in Clay County, so it is a common project throughout the state. But, it is something that we did extensive testing on with a company, and this was the ultimate recommendation, and I think it is something we're going to utilize a lot in the.
And then, are there certain temperatures that works best in, or?
Not necessarily temperatures, so it's more to do with what, so, a lot of our roads have, say, a foot of asphalt and an inch of gravel base underneath it, where you can't do what a lot of counties do and do a full-depth reclamation. You have to only stabilize that four inches, so you don't get into the clay that we have around here.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I was encouraged to see that the final amount was about three hundred thousand dollars less than the original bid. With that, I'll make a motion to approve the final contract voucher in the amount of two million six hundred and eight thousand seventy-three dollars and ninety-five cents.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion, that's signified by aye. Opposed? Same sign? Motion passes.
Yeah, the second item I have is requesting approval of a final contract voucher for SAP fourteen six twenty-six zero thirty-one. So, this was the millon overlay project on CASA twenty-six, from CASA twenty-seven to CASA nineteen, about seven and a half miles. So, this was the first year of a multi-year project on twenty-six, and I think it turned out really, really well. Next year, we are planning to do nine and a half miles to the west of this project. So, the final amount to be approved for this project is two million six hundred and ninety-nine thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Questions for Justin?
Move approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
My, thank you. I know that all of our roads are important, but I think the importance of this specific project in terms of safety probably rises to the top of all of which you do. Really had heard enormous feedback from folks that travel that and live up that way, how important repairing this roadway is, and I'm just glad that we were able to get as much of it done this year and more next year. Certainly hope that it will hold up throughout the construction project. I know that's a concern because of the amount of weight and stress that that road takes. So, thankful for this.
Any further comments or questions? All in favor of the motion, signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion passes.
And the final item I have is requesting approval to advertise for SAP fourteen six oh one zero zero eight. This is the paving project on CASA one from CASA twenty to CASA twenty-six. This was a project that we graded a couple of years ago, and the proposed letting date would be February twenty-seventh.
Questions for Justin?
It's ready to go.
Yep.
Move approval.
Round second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Thank you, Justin.
And then, I did just want to take a second. I did bring my new assistant county engineer, Alex Sawyering. So, Alex comes with a pretty diverse background. He's got about thirteen years of experience, and we are super excited to have him.
Yeah, thanks. But, you're somebody I've met and talked to. Thanks, yeah. Thanks for your time this morning. Somebody I've met and talked to, and I'll get to meet, I guess, as we go here, so looking forward to helping the county out in the best way I can. So, like Justin said, I bring a pretty diverse background and dealt with a lot of different projects and contractors, so ready to get to work, I guess.
We welcome you to the county. You're long overdue.
Yeah.
And you've got a good team out there and a good boss, and I think you're going to enjoy working here.
I agree. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, move on to committee reports. Mr. Kravonov, you start us off.
We're having a quick meeting. I'll keep it quick. So, over the last week, I had three meetings. The first one being on Thursday, January fourth. It is our first-year intergovernmental committee meeting that Commissioner Campbell and I attended. Really, what it amounts to at this point is we're getting ready for our intergovernmental retreat. That'll be on January twenty-sixth. It was going through the final details, and a lot of that discussion was toward the end of the schedule lining up to see what we can give for legislators to come join us and be pretty specific about our emphasis of this retreat this year is on childcare, and just how can, to, well, presentations throughout the day with that focus, and then maybe get some comments from our legislators as to what they see the session looking like in, specific toward this subject. So, reporting on that. Later, right after that, then I had my monthly meeting for the children's mental health. Again, I think main discussions here were also with legislature in mind, our priorities in mind, working towards general children's mental health in the way of acuity, higher acuity, and trying to bring those pieces together, be it within social services, this board, AMC, and what can we do to be somewhat effective toward a couple of challenges that work in this area. I know Representative New Keeler is working on a couple, hopefully revisions. What, one in particular is two thirty-five, or two forty-five B statute that seems to have a little problem to it. And I know our reimbursement rates in the state are behind the times, and another real inf, another real emphasis on that. Until those rates get up, it's pretty hard to hire staff. And as we maybe look at a potential long-term goal of having a psychiatric facility here in Clay County, we need to make sure that we have adequate staffing before we move on anything toward that. So, anyway, that's mainly what that meeting was about. Then last night, I had the first meeting for the Buffalo Watershed District in Barnesville at their office, really beginning of the year topics, setting up their accounts. They did have their election of officers, all the people that were in their present positions in twenty-two, or twenty-three, excuse me, retain that as far as chair, vice chair, territory secretary, all the same people, same, all the same spots. I think the only other thing that really would be pertaining to Clay County is that they are starting to engage now the appraisal work for the ring deck that will go around town, and working with those people on, in consideration toward easements or the actual purpose.
Wolverton?
What I'm saying?
I just wanted to clarify what town?
Georgetown.
Right.
Yeah.
Georgetown or Wolverton, or both?
Well, we've been already doing it in Wolverton. That started, I think in December, we had that conversation. This has been more Georgetown. And they were, and again, I guess the discussion was also part of it. Crown Appraisals has been the main person. Crown Appraisals has been the main person working on these appraisals. They're, at this point, full. So, for Georgetown, it's going to, they're going to be used in that way, appraisals. So, that was the main, other than that, I mean, it was minor things, but it was a lot of reporting about just get, where things getting going for this year and kind of summing up things from last year. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Mojo?
Last week, I attended the University of Minnesota Extension and AMC MOA Subcommittee. Long discussion, as you recall, the MOU that we have existing with the university for extension programmers in Clay County. This next one will run from two thousand twenty-five through two thousand twenty-seven, so we're reviewing and finalizing what that draft agreement could look like coming forward to the counties. Certainly, there's some areas in which we're editing. It has been difficult for the university to secure employees in those positions all over the state because of the requirements and their pay, so they are looking at the inflation factor component, the county cost of living component. One thing that's really important is because they do know and realize that their employees work so closely with our county employees, so they're looking at all the different counties and looking at what their COLA increases will be for the proposals. I have looped our administrator in, so he is aware what could be coming through based on those discussions, and, yeah, I just, I appreciate the fact that they're allowing counties to be part of that dialogue, so that we can give feedback as we move forward. Yesterday, I attended the Executive Committee of the Fargo-Moorhead MetroCog, our first meeting of the year. A big discussion item that took a long time was the general liability insurance that the organization has. Last year, NDOT, North Dakota DOT, increased the requirements for liability coverage from one million to two million dollars. MPOs were not looped into that discussion until late of November, understanding that they would be affected. This results in a lack of adequate insurance coverage, and so, NDDOT will not be approving the consultant contract for the readiness study as of January first, and that has put us in a little bit of a limbo. So, we're having long discussions with our insurance provider, and as you know, and we've dealt with this, sometimes the legislature comes up with decisions that have unintended consequences, and I think the council of governments is one of those. So, the City of Fargo and City of West Fargo is having a legislative update discussion with the North Dakota legislators on Friday. It's timely, because we were able to get this on the agenda. It's very, very time-sensitive. Currently, the funding for the consultant work is coming out of reserves, and as you know, that's not necessarily a sustainable action. But because there are other MPOs, certainly the Grand Forks MPO, we're working with them to make sure we are addressing that component, and that does have unintended consequences based on what the CPG grant contract is. So, federal highway will also be looped into those discussions. We discussed the election of officers. It will happen at the January eighteenth meeting. Because of the, because of the rotation, Clay County will then serve in the vice chair capacity, so I worked through to get the signatory information done for that, so we're ready to go on the eighteenth. And talked about the project selection and prioritization that will happen at the Transportation Technical Committee coming up. Later in the afternoon yesterday, I attended the construction meeting of our withdrawal management detox facility. We had really great conversation on all of the work that has happened there, almost completely watertight now with the last rain. Certainly, the mud held them up a little bit, but we were able to work through and get a lot of the work done. There will be a couple pending proposals coming to this board. We did have an omission of the monument sign. As you recall, we added that we'll combine the signs for DMV and that facility to save some money. It seemed to make the most sense. There is a little bit of a addition in terms of a heat tracing control, so that we're able to monitor that remotely. And then, there was a savings in terms of landscape revisions, that there, too much of that was initially bitted, more than we were going to need. And then, needing to add some spray foam at the top of a wall added a little bit of an increase, much in terms of amending, I think the total is somewhere around that ten thousand dollars, once you have the additions and subtractions. So, that will be coming to this board, and we're excited, because it's, we're looking on track for a August finish, so we're really excited about that. But if you have the opportunity to go up there, it looks beautiful. It's a beautiful facility. After that, we attended the construction meeting for our DMV site. The concrete has been completed, and now the foundation walls and steel will be, will start going upward, so that's really exciting to see that. On the last one, Gertz, on the withdrawal management, Gertz employees did have an opportunity to walk through our detox facility to make sure we weren't missing anything, and so I appreciate that Gertz is doing that to save us money. And then, back to the DMV meeting, we did talk about the black dirt relocation. As you recall, there was a bit of a pile there. We wanted to make sure that pile went down, so it didn't, didn't result in a snow issue on fifteenth, but they were able to get that going. And I think that's, all on that one. And that does conclude my reports, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you. On Thursday, January fourth, I also attended the intergovernmental committee meeting that Commissioner Kravonov talked about. I just want to highlight a couple of the items on the agenda for the retreat scheduled for the twenty-sixth of January, and as he mentioned, it's going to be childcare-based. One of the presenters is going to be Marsha Erickson with West Central Industries, and she's going to be giving a state of the childcare environment. And then, we're going to have Maria Steen from Lakes and Praises Community Action Partnership. And then, we will be having our own Clay County Social Services, Jessica Mickelson and staff, will be going over regulations that, for childcare services in Clay County. And then, something that I'm really excited about, and it seems to be on its way to real success, is the DGF school program that they have for, and they refer to it as Rebels Kids Care. It's an, it's an in-school childcare issue that's apparently doing quite well. And so, Tracy Tollifson, who runs that, is going to be talking about that, and that could be a, you know, a new way in, you know, getting some of these younger kids where they can start off their morning in this, and then be able to go directly from there into some education. So, it's, 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 it might just be a new, a new opportunity for school districts throughout the state, for that matter, to maybe look at doing. And then, and then we will have, each entity is going to be allowed some time to give updates on what's going on within their jurisdictions, and then the legislatures. That same day, we had a special diversion authority meeting, and the only item on the agenda was a closed executive session, and that was for the purpose of attorney consultation regarding negotiations update for. regarding negotiations update for an amendment to the project agreement for the stormwater diversion channel and associated infrastructure. So we, we had that closed session. We came back out with no action taken, but there will probably be more to come on that in the coming weeks and months. Then yesterday, I also attended, along with Commissioner Mojo, the withdrawal management facility project. She mentioned the, we did, we did, at one time, we went back and we, we removed the monument sign in front of the, of that facility, and we figured we'd have one monument sign for both that and the DMV. And if you're interested in what that monument sign is going to look like, it's going to be that right there, which is a nice looking, that'll be on the outside of the, of the building. I think Commissioner Mojo gave a very good, detailed report on the project. I did have some questions on B3 issues related to that project and the process in submitting to be able to be reimbursed for our grant, and Lori Johnson and Kathy McKay are going to be working on, starting to submit those expenses to receive those grant dollars. Thankful for them for, for doing that.
No question on that. Did the interior light issue with B3 get all the results?
Well, it's funny that you bring that up. It's the, it's the one area, you know, we asked for several variances, and that is the one area yet where, where they have not agreed to removing that interior lighting. We're well on our way in this project, and, and, you know, I think we continue to have a dialogue with them. Our staff believe that that is, would not be in the best interest, interest of the people who are there to even have that lighting. When you're in, in some of those conditions that they're at, the last thing you want is to have, you know, bright lights shining down on certain areas. So I have a tendency to think that our professional people know better than what somebody who might be making rules in St. Paul might think, but, so.
Pretty good discussion about the statute 403 technical work group, which has been suspended until they get a third-party mediator in there, and the state process to do that so far has taken five months, and they assure us that it'll be ready for a release of a RFP here, hopefully within a month. One of the issues that we, that came up a year ago was that the federal government, through regulations from the FCC, could pass regulatory requirements that would make this entire 403 debate moot. And I asked for an update on that, and there was not somebody from Public Safety there who was familiar with the latest on that, but I received shortly after the end of the meeting, an email assuring me that we'll have a briefing on it next month. So if that, if there's, if the federal government, FCC is making any headway on that, it could eliminate some real headaches for the state of Minnesota, but I'm not necessarily hopeful. That's sort of a, a long shot, and we're probably going to have to work our way through that when they get the, the work group back up. We had some discussion on public safety telecommunications certification. Regional boards are doing some legislative support letters on that, and that was a record meeting. We actually got done in 20 minutes. So it was first of the year, and there was not a whole lot to be covered on, on, from their perspective. And that, that completes my report. Steve?
I think, Mr. Chair, last, on the third, we had our Strive for Excellence meeting. One of the things that we've been talking about over the last years is identifying additional ways that we can identify leaders and provide leadership training, and so our STRIVE committee has been focusing on, on that. They're going to be bringing forward some different ideas moving forward here, probably in the next month or so. One of the ideas of what we'll be presenting is, is a piece of that, is NACO provides a high-performance leadership training. It's an 11-week online course, and we would, we'd be looking to make that part of our, part of our standard training within, within reason. We've talked with them and with our relationship through AMC, it would be an opportunity to do that as part of our first, first cohort. If the board were to, to approve something, we would be looking for some commissioner participation in that first cohort. So something to consider, but more information on that. On the third, we also had an administrator group. I met with Dan Molly, Robert Wilson, Michael Redlinger, and much of our focus that was, that meeting was some of the strategic planning for their facilities that are happening within their agencies. On the fourth, I participated in the intergovernmental retreat. That's been addressed in, in great detail. One of the things I would note, just from, from Commissioner Campbell's comments on the success portion of their, of the, of the IGR, in the past, last year, we talked about the impact that we've, of our facilities that we've had. So if there's different ideas that you'd like me to bring forward as part of that, please let me know. On the fourth, I met Ms. Johnson, I met with Ellis in a due diligence call on upcoming bonding for the DMV. That went well. On the fifth, participated with members of Moorhead and Moorhead Public Service and representatives from our West Central Regional Water District. And as we move forward with the legislate, or the, excuse me, the executive judicial organization or setup of, of our, of our water district, we want to make sure that we're transparent with all of our members, and we discussed what that, what that would look like with them and any potential cutout around Moorhead, Moorhead and Moorhead Public Service growth area. So that went well. That afternoon, I met with Dan Molly, Derek LaPointe, we received, we had discussed some city-county updates. We're going to be meeting more on a monthly basis with, throughout 2024, to make sure that we're current with all the things that are happening, both in the city and the county. The day that we were there, Moorhead Center Mall, the Herberger's building has been, has been gutted from the inside, and they were actually sawing the building away from, from the hallway and from the parking ramp, and so it won't be very long until that portion, portion comes down. So on the, the fifth, met with Lori Johnson, I met with Standard and Poor for our bond rating call. That went very well. I think it was an important phone call to have, as we've talked about through our budget process, and from our, our general revenues, we saw a, a loss of our investments on paper of roughly, roughly $4 million. And having said that, we, we only, it's only a loss if you sell. And so the thought from, from, or the concern from, from the rating committee was is that maybe we were spending without planning, and so that, that was a good, a good piece. We're looking to have information on that on the 18th, from, from a bonding standpoint, hoping to keep our rating where it's at, and then also we'll have before this commission on the 23rd for those bond sales. Yesterday, also participated in the owners' meetings for both the DMV and, and detox facility that have been well-covered. We're looking to have a tour of those facilities at our February meeting. I did want to share, we did, we did receive our state audit information for 2022. It has been, has been released. Get you each a copy of that. We did receive an unmodified finding, which is the goal of that audit, and I have invited the state auditor to come forward to present that information here in, in the coming weeks. Just do want to point out that, that the last two years, if you recall, this audit has come after, into the following year, and just wanted to reassure the board that the delays aren't due to any impact of information not being shared properly with the state auditor. And then lastly, did pass around the legislative conference. Again, I just want to note that's on 21st, 22nd of February. I did note the MRC meeting is 5:30 that day, so it's a Tuesday, so we may, may need to head out of here fairly early or right away after, or. And so, and then just for our citizens, would just note that in recognition of Martin Luther King Day, will be closed next Monday. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Brian, do you have anything? Jackie?
Well, just to let Jackie know who's attending this, so we can get...
All right. We're adjourned.